Keep up with Steve.
All this stuff.
Changes.
Well, yeah, then I, Bonnie suggested some changes. I don't know whether I didn't do them right or when I went to. We're on, but no Bonnie.
Haven't seen her yet.
I just saw her like two hours ago. I know she's coming. One of Bonnie's directions in the first.
Yeah.
Four one three one, it was like fifty feet and then it only said zero.
Yeah, it should say.
Okay.
Let's see.
That just was a zero.
Yeah.
Out of five.
No less than fifty.
Yeah.
Then there was. Shall not exceed where lot covered with the exception of lots contained. Lot coverage shall not exceed. Actually, say fifty.
Okay.
Um. Seventy-five.
Alright.
Let's leave.
What can I accept? It's clear. Be kind of. And maybe this for other. Applications. Which this language disappeared when this got redone.
Oh, all setbacks. Well, no, yeah. What what happened is. I think this could stay. This should stay.
It should stay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we gotta add that back in.
I know.
Well, on. Four point one. Point three point one. There's already a sentence. In that section that I didn't write down.
Okay.
And. I think there has to be underlining if we're highlighting what change. Um. So add back. Four point one point three one. This sentence.
Hi Bonnie. I'm I'm with you and I wanted to know um which which there's the three amendments, which one are you talking about?
We're we're talking about the very first four point one. Point three point one.
Okay. Let me find that.
So uh what Ray pointed out is that. There is an existing sentence that I didn't. Put. That that goes in front of this language.
Okay.
I've got to put that back in so that. You still have that.
What's the sentence?
The sentence is all setbacks. And separation distances shall be measured from the nearest corner of the building to the property line. So four point three point one is is just the general section earlier in the ordinance. It's not just. Specific to solar, but we. But in order since it's setback, I think that we we should have it there as well.
Okay.
And. Um, I don't know if you've got it in the draft, but. The last sentence. It should be the numbers fifty in the parentheses.
Right.
And. Then the second. One, four point one. Point four point two.
Mm hmm.
Um. It. Again, there's some other setback or lot coverage. Um. Language that I didn't put in here because they're not being changed, but. One that's being changed. All other lots shall not exceed fifty percent of lot area covered by buildings. And other impervious surface. If we need an S on that. And then we add with the exception of lots containing a commercial. Solar array where lot coverage shall not exceed fifty percent. Except that if projects. Includes dual use indoor biodiversity enhancement. Lot coverage shall not exceed. Seventy-five percent.
Mm hmm.
Now, the existing section says eighty-five. But. Think we talked about seventy-five the other.
Kind of all agreed. Seventy-five.
And you don't have the full area covered, but that certainly significant.
Yeah, I would I would be open to increasing it back to eighty-five if we're since we have setbacks. Already pushing it in from bounds and if they're already going to do all of these best management practices that are outlined in dual use and habit biodiversity enhancements. You know, I don't know. Anyway, or we can keep it at seventy-five. Saying it could be more permissible if they're gonna do all of that extra stuff to make it as good as it can be, you know?
I don't. I don't have a problem with that.
It also incentivizes those options more by making it, you know, thirty-five percent more instead of just twenty-five. Yeah.
Or we could say eighty percent.
I like eighty.
Want to go eighty-one and a half?
Eighty percent then?
Eighty percent?
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Eighty percent score, okay.
That's still quite a bit.
Yeah. But you're right, if they if they do all of the other stuff. Um, and the other thing is. You know, I was thinking about this because I did read these. And and Andy mentioned that to me uh this afternoon and I thought, you know. If it means that. A farmer can keep. The land and that the land will be in agriculture. Then that's important. And if if eighty percent is going to help that happen, um then I think that's. That's worth. Doing.
You'll just reduce some of the needed. acreage. To lower.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, by increasing those setbacks and everything, you know, the buffers and. By increasing the setbacks. You've already kind of eliminated how much lot coverage you can really have on a small lot anyway, so. Really only going to be able to achieve eighty percent if you're starting with. Pretty large lot.
And yeah, because it's gonna be. Space between the rows. That aren't going to be covered too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It may be very hard for anyone to really fill eighty percent when you get down to it.
Well, that was my question about the whole thing was I was never clear to me, are we talking the outline? Of the array or are we talking literally just where the panels are?
I think you're talking where the panels are.
Yeah, well, then probably nobody's ever gonna get close to that. That would make more sense why some of the towns had such low.
Yeah.
Percentages.
Yeah.
Because. Yeah, especially on the rotating axis arrays, the coverage is reduced by half. While the. Footprint is the same size, but the number of panels is cut in half.
Yeah.
There's a lot more. Solar penetration, so.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't. If we're fine with it, when. Again, sometimes until you see these in operation.
The way this is moving, I. I mean, it wouldn't surprise me five years from now, but this could be totally redone from beginning to end because the advanced system is taking place. In the panels.
Now.
Okay, do we move on to the um? Additional standards?
Um. One thing I just noticed, it's a little thing, but in um H biodiversity. Um, yeah, it says developers must consider habitat enhance, and I think that should be, I think you meant enhancement.
Where are you?
I'm on.
Way ahead, Bonnie.
Oh, you're way ahead.
Oh, all right. Never mind. Never mind.
All right, we'll catch up to that.
Okay.
We're gonna go to three point two first, the visual impact.
Okay.
We made a lot of changes there.
Yeah.
So I put in that language. Providing year-round screening, so this is pretty much. Putting in a lot of what Bo- Bowdenham had, but leaving out bits of it. But um talking about minimum. Height. Or trees. Minimum of four feet high, average six feet high. Planning with at least two rows. At offset planting to. Kind of fill in the buffer. Know if that's. What everyone was thinking. Um. Some discretionary. Language, larger trees may be required for screening of larger projects. With structures that differ significantly from those located. On. Abutting properties or that produce. Significant visual impacts. Again, an extra period there. Um, that's from Bowdenham.
Uh huh.
And then the operator should timely remove. Dead diseased and damaged trees and shrubs. And the maintenance plan for the project must address maintenance of the screening buffers.
Yes.
And another period, that was sort of your concern, Ray, I think that, how do we ensure? That. These buffers will be maintained. And then existing vegetation and forested buffers. Shall be retained to the fullest extent practicable. And I think that's a site by site. Um. Situation.
The only thing that I feel like we lost somewhere in here was that. We have preserve existing native vegetation at the top, but just in terms of specifying that the buffer plantings would be native species isn't in here anymore.
Well, it's in the site.
Okay.
It's in the net.
Where?
Yeah. Um, so that's in that E one. That's where Bonnie, you were saying we gotta have the word enhancement after habitat.
No, no.
I was down H.
Yeah, much further down, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I guess no change there. Let's see if we got that in this that I think what you raised, Andy, and and sub E. So we got citing land clearing, soil erosion and habitat and agricultural impact. Major projects shall not be located within a half mile. Radius of the perimeter, I added that word.
Yes.
Of other permitted major or medium solar projects unless. The project area is fully screened from adjacent roads. And abutting properties by existing vegetation. Or topography. Preference should be given to locating the system on previously developed degraded or marginally productive portions of the property. Citing a project should not occur. The prime agricultural soil. Et cetera, to the fullest. Then practicable as determined by the planning board. Clearing of natural vegetation should be limited to what is necessary, well, that's already there.
Mm hmm.
Um.
And then there's that sentence about herbicides.
Yeah, may only be used for targeted control of noxious vegetation. Or for vegetation management.
You have an of instead of an or.
Yep.
Um. Useful widespread control of vegetation or for vegetarian management, is it?
Vegetarian management, yeah, that's what I'm about. Manage those vegetarians.
Yeah.
Cut in my profits. Yeah, vegetation management.
I think I got the or on fixed in the.
Oh, okay. I printed it out before you sent the revised copy, so sorry.
We got that. So. Terms of this half mile. Um. So it only refers to. The the exception is only referring to. Well, there's natural screening. Yes, the alternative would be if we. Added additional requirements for screening more than. Would be required for projects that are not a half a mile. Or is it good as it's written?
I guess bottom line is if it's. Totally screens. Whether it's. There pretty much or it has to be helped to make a heck of a lot of difference, shouldn't it? The object is to have. Those being added probably screen.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, yeah, we're just saying that there needs to be existing vegetation or topography that's screening and supposed to just saying, well, we're gonna plant. Four foot trees. Twenty years from now, they're gonna screen it, right? I think the way it's written is fine, it's fine, so.
Yeah, I think I think we needed to specify. That it's it's the half mile of the from the perimeter. But other than that, I think it's, yeah. I'm good.
You got it, you good with it?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, um. And we, so i- in this thing, it does in this paragraph, it does say native pollinator friendly seed mixes shall be used.
Mm hmm.
But. That to me is talking more about the herbaceous vegetation that is growing like under the panels and stuff. I would just in the previous. Uh visual impact paragraph, I think that there should just be a line specifying that the the screening buffer vegetation is also native species. I thought we had that in.
I thought we did too.
Yeah.
But it's definitely not in there.
It's not in there.
No.
Um.
Well.
Okay, so. Properties must be. Comprised largely or entirely of, should we put native species evergreen trees?
You could say comprised. Uh largely or entirely of native species and evergreen trees or and or shrubs. I would just make it clear that it's native species for both the trees and the shrubs.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the.
And see, that does a. If you just said, if you let, if you put in deciduous, I mean, you put in. Just native trees that could be deciduous, I mean, they're gruesome leaves.
Well, that's that's what we wanted to avoid, I think, was. The deciduous trees won't screen. I mean, they could put in. Deciduous as long as. The other ones are providing adequate. Screening.
Yeah, they would have no reason to do it.
Yeah.
Kind of benefit then for the cost involved.
Yeah, I just think it's important to point out native because if you look at the project under review, unless a nosy neighbor suggests, hey, by the way, all the trees that you expect aren't actually native to the northeast.
Yeah.
You know, they don't necessarily. Do that.
So we'll add. The native, or we might, I might put it in front of. Shrubs as well as evergreen, just so that.
Twice is great. And then back to that herbicide sentence, the end of it is kind of redundant. You say shall not be used for widespread control of vegetation. Or for vegetation management, that.
That's enough.
Well, I think what we were maybe trying to say is widespread control of vegetation or for like. Um, in place of mowing, like is there? Uh. Or or we just ended it for widespread control of vegetation or. I think because we were talking about, you know, we didn't want them to just go in underneath all the panels and just spray herbicides instead of trimming. Um.
So. Okay, so what do you think? We we only use.
Routine vegetation management or?
Routine, a routine control of vegetation. Well.
You could say shall not be used for the widespread. Or routine. Management of vegetation. Or. You know, I'm trying to say, am I making any sense here?
Yeah, shall not be used. For the. Widespread. Or routine management. And that way we can. Strike everything from or.
Correct.
Because we got it.
Yeah.
Um. And then in um. So I I kind of created these new sections because I just thought. This is more than definitional. The dual use and biodiversity enhancement, so I. I think it's better to lay it out. Within the ordinance.
Mm hmm.
I mean, there's some benefit to have this apply, some of these to apply to. Any project that takes up quite a bit of acreage, but. Can always address that at a later time. We're putting this specifically in the. The solar. Project reviews, but. And I don't know that there are. Going to be any projects that would. Take up the kind of acreage.
Yeah.
And maybe economic development committee would say otherwise if they knew of. Anything that. It's likely to come to Monmouth that would. Require a lot of land.
Nothing. Do you know of anything coming to Monmouth that requires a lot of land besides solar panels?
Walmart.
No Walmarts or anything?
Gravel pits.
Whoa.
And anyway, so what about this language on? On dual use. The develop must, developers must consider dual use and citing and planning solar development. In order to benefit from an increased lot coverage allowance.
Mm hmm.
And are encouraged to implement implement it in all solar projects.
So you need.
I kind of added that because I'm thinking generally. It's beneficial if we can get people to do it, even if it's a smaller project, but.
You need.
I don't know if that would ever. So I threw that extra language in from what. Andy had come up with, um. Dual use projects involve the installation of solar. Photovoltaic panels on farmland. In such a manner that primary agricultural activities. Such as animal grazing or crop vegetation. Production. Are maintained simultaneously. On the farmland. Dual use array designs may. And paren. Parentheses, but are not required to. Include. Increased panel height or expanded panel row spacing. To improve compatibility with farming operations. And crop production. To qualify as dual use, the in solar installation must. Retain or enhance the land's agricultural productivity. Both short term and long term. To be built, maintained and have provision for. Decommissioning to protect the land's agricultural resources and utility. And three, support the viability of a farming operation. Was there a bit left out there? Parents to implement it. Yeah, that would be. So let's see, so that.
Where is that? Say that again, please?
Doug is suggesting in lines three.
Mm hmm.
Benefit, I'm starting in two, to benefit from an increased lot coverage allowance. And then are encouraged to implement it.
Right. Okay, yep. I think that that language is very consistent with. The whole. Rural character. Character of the town. That. We're gonna do this. And we have to do it because we have to get rid of. Oil, but. We're going to do it in such a way so that we don't lose that. Forever. So I think it's, yeah, I liked it a lot. Just to let you know. And and Steve, did you, I'm sorry, I didn't send it to the others. Did you see that little article I sent? Um, about the sheep. In Massachusetts?
I did.
Um, so this is.
I don't remember all the detail, I must admit.
Yeah, but but I think. The whole idea of dual use for. Solar arrays. On agricultural land is. All over the place. Um. I I mean, it's it's something that is absolutely being done in many, many different places, um so it. For any developers. Um, it won't be a surprise. It shouldn't be.
I think what you're saying, Andy, the more demand there is for it, the more. Farmers may take advantage of. That opportunity.
Yeah.
There are plenty of people who want to work with solar developers.
Yeah.
The 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 lack of willingness is not on the part of the. The farming community, it's a part of the developer. It's, yeah. And developers are definitely all very familiar with the leaves. They they know what it is.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, Novell, who did the project on. Um. We're gonna do the project on South Monmouth and Fishatory. Sort of came back at the meeting and. You know, kind of came up with what they thought. They didn't think initially. In the first couple of years, it makes sense until. The crop is, what do we want to say, has taken hold? So they're thinking year three or something. Was that what it was, Ray? That.
Then five.
That. And then they're not thinking that it would necessarily be two times a year, but it might be only one, but. I guess it depends how how well. Crop grows.
Yeah, and proper management, yeah. Great as a critic.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be uncommon to have the dual use project if you're just utilizing grazing and calling that dual use, which this definition I like because it. It isn't saying we're just raising the panels and spreading them out and doing the really. You know, kind of cutting edge stuff with ag. You know, kind of cutting edge stuff with advertising. You can have a standard array. Throw some sheep in there. It's still going to count as dual use. It's, you know. The, the low bar for the developers. But it wouldn't be uncommon for like mowing to happen once a year in conjunction with sheep grazing or something like that. I, I know of people practicing that in the state of Maine who are, who are doing both, so. But yes, I mean, I also liked this definition. Well. Talks about a lot of the issues. It isn't laying out exact. Guidelines as to how exactly it has to be prescribed because every site is going to be different and. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how much I really, yeah, anyway. The, the, the novel, them saying, well, it's going to take three years for grass to grow on the site. There's already grass growing on the site. Yeah, that saw me to Foxtail, the seed bank is insane. It's all going to pop right back up. I know people in the state of Maine who are grazing sheep. On installations the year that they're installed. So. That to me sounds like kind of more developer, you know. We're, we're going to tell you what you want to hear. And then once the project's out there, you know. But if they say they're going to do dual use and you guys, you know, allow them the increased lot coverage and all of that, well, then they better do it.
Somebody has to.
Well, yeah, there's a, there's the question. Or, or the, something that. Yeah, we're going to do it and, but, but oh, we can't do it this year. Oh, we can't do it that year. So how do we make sure? That if they get the larger lot. More acreage, et cetera, that in fact they do live up to that. What do we do?
That's why you have code enforcement.
Okay. And what is code enforcement? I mean, what? Yeah, other than, than the fact that the guy comes and says, hi, I'm the code enforcement officer. What can he do? Shut it down?
Ah, he can penalize them. I don't know what the, there's a, you know, if you're in, if he finds that they're in violation, that. If their maintenance plan. Their conditions of approval require they do certain things and they don't do them. He usually will send them a, a letter. Say they need to take corrective action. And if they fail to do so. Then he goes to the select board. She. And. Select board has to decide whether they want him to. Start some type of enforcement action in court. And it's a penalty. I don't know if it's. Five hundred dollars a day or fifty dollars a day. That, it, the penalties are quite steep potentially.
All right. So as long as there is, there's absolutely. Something that can be done fairly. Kind of quickly. And that the, the code enforcement officer. In fact, has that authority. I, I like five hundred dollars a day. That's good.
So. Then it's a matter of. Do we have enough code enforcement hours to do those type of things? To check and.
Yeah.
You know, and that's.
Bring that up some other reason.
Yeah. And then I, I think that that's a whole other issue for all of the codes. You know, I mean, it's not just this one guy, so.
They're doing the installation on this, Andy. There's going to be a fair amount of vegetation. It's the impression I got. Oh, there's a fair amount of vegetation that's going to become history. And if I have to. Replant.
Yep.
I guess I should have asked her, but I, I didn't. Why is a fair amount of vegetation going to be destroyed? They're driving. These units in, and it's not a case where they're taking them out with a backhoe to put in.
Yeah.
So. I always, you know, I always felt. Under the impression that it'd be minimal. Three seeding that was needed. And they were driving.
Right. I mean, I think it depends a lot on the site conditions when they're doing the work. I mean, if you look at like what's going on in Augusta and those.
Rotaries.
Rotaries there, clover leaves, whatever we call them. I mean, they were doing a lot of that work, the wettest time of year. And I mean, boy, they ripped everything to shreds. Getting everything in and out and it's just a lot of, lot of traffic. And it's the same thing if I went out. You should see my bale yard right now where I keep all the beet in the winter. I mean, I'm just, I'm driving over the same area again and again and again and it. Had sod on it at one point in the fall, but definitely doesn't anymore. So. So, yeah, I mean, there is. They should be, you know, to the greatest extent possible, not disturbing the soil. I mean, I imagine that that's. Best management practices for any sort of. Work. But. Yeah, I mean, I, but I, I mean, I know the only person who's doing. Solar grazing. At a. Larger scale in the state of Maine currently. Again, because of the. Challenges getting these contracts because there's no, not much of an incentive for the developers to want to work with. In most towns. I mean, he has had experiences on these sites that are, you know, yeah, there are the bare spots. I mean, they throw down seed. There are the bare spots, but you know, a lot of. You get the, a lot of the sod is left intact when you're talking about these old hay fields, which is usually where these things are going. And it, and it does tend to regenerate fairly quickly. There's a lot of seed in the seed bank.
So it shouldn't take three years to get it back where.
That, that reeks of BS to me. Yeah, they told you that. That's the same, same story.
What if this is?
I mean, you saw what it looked like up there on the ridge. When we all looked at that this summer. I mean, that was lush with red clover all under those panels and. So there's your, you know, that's the first full year of operation right there, right? Was this past year?
Yeah. Yeah.
So. And that was even, some of that ground was corn ground. So that was. Their dirt when they started.
So. If. If they decide to take a site which has marginal. It's degraded, okay, then it really. Would be a major project to try to. Grow some crops, all right? You're going to have a hard time to keep it properly vegetated to begin with, right?
Unless they fertilize.
Yeah. I mean. Depends what you're trying to grow. And I mean, also if marginal in what way? I mean, they're not going to want a site. That's three inches to bedrock because then they're going to be. It's going to be a nightmare. And I know of a site over in Auburn where they were doing. Blasting or something, trying to get, I, I don't know. Anyway. Talked to the guy who owned the land. It sounded pretty wild what they were having to do to drive into bedrock. This is on an old dairy farm. And sites that are too wet, vegetation is hard to establish. Well, they're going to be ruled wetlands and they're not going to be allowed to.
Right.
Develop in those either. So. I, I don't, I don't expect. That to be too much of an issue. You know, and if we're talking about a site that is currently in, in woodlot natural vegetation, you know, not currently in agricultural production, then. You know. A biodiversity enhancement project might make more sense. If that meets the, the standard of the biodiversity enhancement, which is to, you know. Try to avoid degrading. High quality natural areas. And that, you know, that's obviously. Potentially challenging to. Decide what is and isn't a high quality natural area, but.
I guess that's why we probably need a little bit of wiggle moment.
See, I'm thinking. That a lot of fees that the planning board charges. Need to be increased, especially for solar projects or some of the bigger ones. Because you've got to build in. That there's a cost to the town. To review whether a project is still meeting. The standards. So like charging someone. An application fee of three hundred dollars. Four hundred dollars, even five hundred dollars is probably not enough. That it should be. Fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, because. Over the course of that or the life of that project. You know, that's the only time you're going to extract a fee. You'll get taxes. But if we try to make. The developers and the landowners. Pay for the. Oversight, so you don't burden overly burden the taxpayer. And then you have money for code enforcement that. Separate.
Is that how low the fees are for these?
It's pretty low. It's pretty low.
And I've paid more than that just to build an addition on my barn.
Well, in addition, they have to do a building permit.
Yeah.
So they're, they're going to pay. Another fee for a building.
I thought it was like one percent of the project cost or something like, it's been a few, been a number of years.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I don't know, I, I started looking at the fees, but the full planning board hasn't kind of seen what I was working on yet.
Does that all need to be revised before the warrant as well? Or you guys can?
No, the, the select board has the authority. To change the fee schedule.
Yeah.
So we kind of purposely did it that way. So you wouldn't have to necessarily go to the town. To get fees approved.
Well. When you're talking about. Checking the vegetation and the other kinds of things that are going on, you're talking about people who deal. You've got the Cabessy Water District. You've got. If you're looking at different kinds of pollinators, I mean, there's Audubon, there's all kinds of. Of expert. Advice that you need to get. And those people don't work for free, nor should they. So I, I think you're absolutely right that we need to start looking at, okay, if we want to do. These, these three things or these four things. Who? Are the people? Or the agencies that are going to be involved? And what do they charge to the town? And how can that be added into the fee? So that again, it's not the taxpayer who's paying for it, but if the developer wants to do this, it should be the developer.
Some of those. Costs. Are supposed to be. Covered by escrow payment. So there's usually a separate escrow fund. Our town managers don't like them because. It's more management. Somebody has to, or maybe the auditors. You know, there's been some problem, I think, over the years, how well. That's been kept track of. Like we have a. We have an escrow for, for the CMP station. And, you know, that's. The cover. Inspections. Because of the work they had to do, I think there was some wetlands that were affected. But the difficulty sometimes is that. You know, you get someone like Dave Shaw knows about it. Well, when he's gone. Does the next guy in line? Know unless Dave has left a. Cheat sheet or something.
Didn't disappear.
Yeah. But anyway, that's a separate. Well, getting back to the biodiversity enhancement. Is that good as written or?
You just need to add M E N T on that first enhance.
Finally, Bonnie, there you go.
Yeah. So the vegeta, it does have any of the vegetation throughout the site, including under the panels. Throughout the buffer plantings will be managed to. Currency establishment and growth of native plant species. While. Controlling non-native and especially invasive plants, species. And efforts to encourage NATO biodiversity and control non-native. And invasive species will be made throughout the lifespan of the array. Plant and seed selection will focus on the use of native species of local genotypes and cultivars.
I said, it should probably have a comma in there.
Yes.
Something. Should be of, of local genotypes and comma and cultivars will not be utilized.
Yes.
Yeah, or a semicolon or. Is there an English teacher among us?
Oh, stop. Yeah.
It's a comma or a semicolon. I've never understood the semicolon. So if somebody could please.
You don't really need, you don't need a semicolon there. A comma will do.
When do you need a semicolon, Bonnie? Because.
Well, I, do you really want me to go into it?
No, please don't.
But this is not one of them.
Cultivars, yeah.
They're what, like fancy plants?
Most plants, when you go to a nursery are cultivars. They're, they're clones of. A, it's a particular clone of a given species. So actually going back to that, you know, the, the project on South Monmouth Road, their initial screening buffer was just going to be. What was it? A green gem or a little gem arbivida, you know, so every one of those things are going to be genetically identical.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's a lot of, I, that, I could go off on a whole other thing. But yeah, there's, there are issues with that. And from a biodiversity standpoint, of course, there's no genetic diversity. But it also can greatly change how. Old web functions.
Yeah, they, it's just, it's like a lot of the stuff that is so cheap at. Walmart or, or even Home Depot, the stuff that they sell. Is not sometimes, sometimes it's okay, but some, no, sometimes it's not. Because it's, again, it's. Grown in a greenhouse in Arizona. And it just doesn't. It doesn't work. But you're right about if it's, if it's. If it's the same thing like an arbivide, and. Arbivides are terrible because half the time they die or they die halfway up. The deer eat them and they're ugly as sin. So. I'm not going to say. Put a line.
You offended Ray.
But. But just a comma will do.
Yep. All right, array designs may, but are not required to include increased panel height to accommodate taller native. Ambitious plants that might otherwise be damaged. Or eradicated by mowing. Wildlife conservation managers such as nesting boxes and brush piles. Should also be incorporated into the array. Then I, I thought we should add something into the. Section on operations and maintenance plan. And I just put in maintenance of healthy screening buffers, but. I suppose we should also include. The. The grass or plant under the. Arrays in that. Anyone got a suggestive? Language on that?
Opponents shall submit a plan to the operation ends of the large scale ground. So it's just, we shall include measures for maintaining safe access to the installation. Maintenance.
She's thinking about or?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, it might be language used before. Did we describe this?
Well. Screening buffers is not the same as. The grass and the clover and, and. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what. How we want to describe what we're talking about.
Something simple like adequate vegetative cover. Throughout the site or. Let me get that here.
Yeah, I think adequate.
The soil was covered and held.
Yeah, adequate vegetative coverage. In the array area.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh. Other than that, I, I don't know why I left removal. I don't think that it's changed at all. I think. We have their stable. We have their stabilization of revegetation of the site is necessary to minimize erosion. Native pollinator friendly seed mixers. Shall be used. On sites previously used for agricultural activity. Feeding with a cover crop or perennial forest mix. Is required. So I don't. I think that's adequate.
I think that's adequate, that all seems adequate. I have a question going way back to beginning. Just going back to. Four one, four two again with the lot coverage. What what do you two happen to know what the lot coverage is, say, up on the ridge? I I was under the impression that lot coverage. The area of the arrays, not just the area that is covered by the panels, the inverters and the roads. So now I'm wondering if fifty percent is actually quite high still and like all of this. Just.
Yeah.
For nothing.
So the. The purpose. Is generally. To limit the amount. Of impervious. Structures. Or. Driveways. Something that is not going to. Necessarily. Uh, allow. Filtration.
Yep.
And so. We have in like shoreline zoning and just generally. A limit on how much you. Create on the lot of pavement or.
Right.
Rooftop. And so when you get into the solar, I mean, that's a whole different. Situation.
Yeah.
Because of the array, so it's not the. Necessarily that with. The total. The total array area. Is not all impervious. It's from a technical standpoint.
So if you took a twenty acre parcel. Kind of the South Monmouth Road here, twenty acre parcel, you put an eight acre array or nine acre array on it, it's not. Roughly fifty percent is the total coverage, it's actually dramatically less than that then because.
Yeah, because you've got space, you you probably have space between the rows. And like. Certainly a a big project. The groupings might have some spacing.
Yeah.
And you might have some land around the inverters that might. Be. Soil.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say exactly.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
And I think you're you're right, the arrays that. Kilt. I think you still have to take the surfaced area of. Say each array.
Yep.
And determine that and determine. The gravel roads. And. The inverter structure. And that's probably your. Impervious structures that.
Yep. Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if that fifty percent number is still too high. Cause that, I mean. You know, when you look at it from above, I mean, there's a lot of. Especially with those rotating access, I mean, there's a lot of open space and, you know, I mean, we. Our intent with all of the dual use and all of that anyway was to try to incentivize it.
Yeah.
If fifty percent is like, well, all the projects are. Around fifty percent to begin with, I have no idea, that's why I'm curious if you guys actually know. What the numbers are, because I was also then, you know, all these other towns were doing like. Thirty percent, thirty percent.
Well, I think our application. Applications call for that calcul- you know, for the developer to give us a calculation. Of what? What the lot coverage is.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't remember offhand without. Working back what those are. But. The most, it's most restrictive in shoreline zoning. Well, it's like twenty percent. And so it looks like in. Four point one, Ray. And in commercial project, we allow. So we have thirty percent on residential in mixed use lots that have a septic system. Thirty percent. And then all other lots shall not exceed fifty percent. That's a commercial project. That. I think it's more for the commercial sections. I don't know. I I just don't. You know, we've we've been dealing on the solar with the eighty five percent, so that's such a big number, you don't. Really.
Right.
Get down into the weeds as to how much is actually.
Right.
Actually there. It might mean now we have to.
Yeah.
Look at it more carefully. Going down to fifty percent. Possibly up to eighty. We go to eighty. Said we'd go to eighty.
Right, eighty percent, not eighty five.
Right, well, I feel like we just established that nobody's ever gonna reach eighty five or even eighty percent or probably seventy five percent.
Yeah.
So. I'm just, yeah, I guess, you know.
But fifty, if fifty is. Standard for other commercial things, then until. We find out that it that it's. Unworkable or unreasonable, then at least it's consistent with the other regulations. So there's something to be, I know consistency is the hobgoblin of. Little minds, but. I'll go with it.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah, because I was just curious if it should be, you know, thirty or forty instead of is the bottom bar. How, well, we need to figure out what this is tonight, so.
Yeah.
Need be done.
Well. I mean, we could lower the fifty. Forty and then force them to do more. New news and.
Yeah.
Without.
But, you know, if fifty doesn't seem to be working out. There's other issues that's gonna crop up. This is gonna get addressed again. Not too many years down the road.
Yeah. I guess I would be interested to know what's on those applications, the two applications that have come before you guys, when they said what's the lot coverage actually was.
Yeah. I had my computer, I could tell, tell you. Foolish me. Brought it in the house. My dog got into a porcupine, so.
I don't know. That's not good.
So I was kind of flustered. I got out of the car, I meant to leave it in the car, because I said, well, I'll be coming right out. Oh, well. Well, I can make those changes, send them out either tonight or early tomorrow morning.
Deal with this on Wednesday.
Oh, that would be good.
Yeah. Because Ken called me, right, he was, Ken was concerned we weren't gonna. Have enough time. And and it would force the select board. To have to revisit this before, I think he said April third or fourth, which. Deadline, so. I mean, we were so close, anyway, I think we've.
Yep.
Ashed this out as. Thoroughly as.
No, I think that's great, definitely.
And I I guess on that that next meeting. That'll give people a chance to say that this is what we're gonna stick with.
Yeah, the select board obviously can. Suggest changes. Yeah.
Yeah, you think it's, but well, you two are gonna be there anyway to answer their questions, right?
Ken, yeah.
You know, well, I I know, I just thought you guys already. I think we're agitating, so.
Yeah.
I'm there for a different purpose.
Yeah. I I can push, I can explain this. I will be there so he can as well. Chime in.
And, you know, if it doesn't work out, we can always blame Kent, right?
Right.
Well, Ken said to me, he took a lot of heat for his support of the. Project up on the ridge.
Yeah.
He thinks that might have influenced how the votes came out, but. Of course, he has to run, when he ran for the House, yeah. Ken with the whales candidates. He might be too sensitive about it.
Did you guys see the, what Wes Gardner just did? With zero, zero planning board, zero, I mean, they just, they passed a moratorium on solar and.
I did they, I thought they didn't go through on on the storage buildings too, right?
Yeah, they. I believe so, yeah.
Think they passed.
They paid storage buildings and solar.
Yeah.
Both the moratorium. Because of their lack of any sort of regulation, people are upset. So. That was an article in the paper yesterday, I resisted the urge to send that out everyone.
It's the Wild West and Wes Gardner.
Well, yeah.
Had no idea.
Oh, yeah.
That's crazy.
Oh, yeah. You know, we've run into things with. You know, we tried to do some. Few years ago. Some planning. On on like Cabo Sea Lake, get all the towns together. We couldn't get Wes Gardner to participate and. I think we were sorry that Manchester was there, right, wasn't it? We had kind of a.
Yeah.
A difficult meeting. Manchester was overly. Overly regulating. Stuff.
They're they're always going home on that.
Now there might be a little, it might have been a change in. In the people.
Your leadership.
In leadership that changed that, but. I had a couple. Guys that wanted to do small. Little small subdivisions, it can be really nice and they just. Making all these demands that just.
Those never been able to get worse to come back.
No. Yeah, it's too bad. You know, you would think the people who live on the lake wanna preserve what they've got. Yeah. Well, at least they have shoreline zoning, so protects. Some of the water bodies, at least, they could have a minimum, but. I don't know who is. Be a pain in the, ah, to be on the select board and have to deal with. People coming in and wanting to fill in the shoreline, you have to.
Yeah, article I just that I read and it sounds like the three select board members just ride around and also serve as code enforcement. Even though they don't have any codes really, but they.
Yeah, well, they have to have shoreline zone.
Right, so I guess the select board just goes in and checks out everybody's.
Yeah.
Sometimes I find that hard to believe it's actually happening, so.
Well, I don't know if you ever go in like the Hollowa Litchfield Road from Purgatory into Hollowa.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there was. One side of the road, you get to the. Yeah, I remember what's the crossover road, one is Collins Mills, but there's some, there's some. Of the storage buildings down there, but then on the main road. And on the other side of the Collins Mills. They put in more, and when they were doing it, the water that was standing. On that site. You know, it was incredible. Because it must come down the hill. But they had, you know, and I said, how? How are they allowed to have that water just sit there? Then they were trying to get rid of it in order to. Do their construction. I can see those. Those buildings after a big brain floating away. Oh, well.
Yeah, they do have a lot of them, the building, it looks like they're building another one right on one twenty six, pretty near to the. Where you get on the turnpike, more storage units there. There was a pad going in that looked just like all the other storage units.
Yeah. I think it's. I think it's Summit Realty is building a lot of those. And then they have a sign up, one dollar for. For three months. Have people in there. We all have too much junk. Better to throw it out than to put it in storage. You never know when you're gonna need it.
Well, see, that's the thing, and then you 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 get rid of stuff and the following week. You need it. And where is it? It's gone, so. There you go.
All right.
We are not meeting on Thursday, obviously.
Nope.
And so we're gonna pass this on and. Doug, are you going to look at this? This Wednesday?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. And that's.
It'll be on the agenda for us to vote on it.
Okay. And so that starts at seven?
Six.
Six, okay. Well. I know you guys are gonna go for another reason, but I'll be there too. I'll I'll be there. I'll zoom in.
Guys got a lot to talk about one thing I don't.
Public hearing as well. It's tough with the the solar thing. Transfer station, Ken is so behind it. He's been lobbying me. Forever. To to go, because he knows Joe. Will probably vote for it. And but not Kristen or. Mark. opposed to it. And I, well, I heard, when I talked to the town manager today. He said, it it's not gonna do what I thought it was gonna do, I thought it was gonna be a wash as far as, because it will, it would make up. The payments that we've been paying for ten years would be. Uh, would cover our electric bill. So. Uh, once it was built, it would. You know, wouldn't be costing the taxpayer anything. But. Justin told me today. When we were talking, he said, whoops, I forgot to let put in the streetlights. We don't pay for the streetlights anymore. So it's like. It reduces it by twenty thousand dollars or so.
Twenty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah. We were paying for streetlights or something like that. And. But not anymore, and so now. It'll it'll cost the taxpayers. First year is gonna cost seventy six thousand, he said. For the, uh, uh, but next year. We did that and then. It will be quite so much for the following nine years or whatever. And we could just buy into that. Array, that's that in Bucksport. Get twenty percent off. And with all we have to do, we have two dams to take care of. Woodbury and. The culvert up on the Wilson Pond, better. And. And then the roads. People are. They want their roads, they want their.
Yeah.
They want that pave, nice. And I should be able to take care of that, no problem. Just give them the money to do it.
So.
The, it's got six hundred thousand left from last year. That we didn't spend. To do some roads like the road out here, Blue Road and. South Monmouth Road and. And he's gotta take care of you.
Well, they they did the upper half, South Monmouth, a couple of years back. The lower half was the one that was worse off to begin with, though, I thought, so.
So. Wilson Pond Road is another one, that, uh, but then. Of course, Dan launched another two hundred fifty thousand. of course, Dan wants another two hundred and fifty thousand for this year. And we also, he he wants a salt shed.
All that's up. So the I mean, right now, you have the electricity in this building. Is Comston included in what? Who pays? The you guys pay the town pays Comston.
Yeah.
Then you have the town office and the garage public works. But the schools go through the R S Q, so they're not involved in that.
Unfortunately, that sounds that sounds accurate compared to, so we we have a, we have a net metering project on one of our barns. It's a seventy two kilowatt array that we put in four years ago, maybe. And uh if it weren't for, we had got a thirty percent grant from the USDA for it. If it weren't for that, uh it would not be a one for one trade on our electricity bill. So it sounds sounds similar cost wise, you know, it's like this extra thirty percent per year maybe or something that isn't actually gonna be covered because the panels are just still too a little too expensive maybe. I don't know. I have a hard time saying no to that sort of bill because that is radically different than thirty acres of farmland, you know? Losing thirty acres of farmland, that is.
But could you just put a raise on some of the buildings?
That might get more expensive though, cause then you have to, then it's even.
You got the infrastructure.
Or you have to have inverters at every single one and
Yeah.
I mean, that's You're the swing vote, huh?
Yeah, no, Ken, Ken was calling, called me and that he was on that. He just wanted to know generally whether any of that impacted would impact that. And I said, well, yeah, I said, no.
I mean, that would still be qualified as a small
A small project.
So none of the buffering or any of that would apply, right?
Much less significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how big? How big would the array be at the transfer station? Not that big.
Not that big, no. We just cover our electric use. The town's like refuse. I mean, the town buildings like refuse, the public buildings.
Yeah.
And there's a R S P for the description of it. I think I saw. Okay. Is that your, is that your field on the uh obviously road that has fertilizer and stuff there?
Yep, everybody's asking me about that.
Yeah. I said, I looked at it.
Straight PFAS.
Yeah, someone
A little bit of arsenic dusted on top.
Someone asked me and I said, I think that's the organic farm. And I said, I don't think you need to worry. I think that's their field.
Mocha approved. One hundred percent non-detectable, all PFAS and PHAS is wood ash. So it's, yeah, Dave, after the the presentation by Noble, he pulled me aside and like, I might have you pull permit on that. Dave, I don't think that's in your jurisdiction. I'm stacking soil amendments. Oh, I did send him information on it just to.
Yeah. All right.
Bye.
Thanks, bye.
So maybe in a month or so, we can get going on the conference plan.
Oh, God. Around the time I need to start hanging, you wanna start a conference plan?
Yeah.
Oh, Caitlin will be so pleased.
Well, I don't know. I haven't I gotta.
Oh, it'd be nice to finish that someday.
Oh, it would be.
Before it's time to do the next one.
Yeah.